We get it guys?
Yeah.
How are you?
I'm good.
Hey, this is Tommy, uh, Tommy, I was the person who was with the missus. I'm like, wow, he's gone through the women's basketball game. They had to play for my clothing. Oh, good.
Eighty-two.
You good?
Uh. What's up, man?
I'm just checking.
He got a lot of work. He's been working on the camera as well. I didn't have it yet. I mean, I invoke the rule that they're home. I've got to go. Just with that profession, I mean, we begin. The screen.
Okay, I think we're about to settle here. Good evening, everybody. Welcome, everybody, to the January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two Burlington City Council Work Session Meeting. This meeting will be livestreamed on the City of Burlington's YouTube page at www.youtube.com/COBNC. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. As preliminary matter, I am Mayor Jim Buckner. I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipating on the agenda are present this evening, and since this is a hybrid meeting, we'll continue that format. So, members present, when I call your name, please respond with the affirmative. Mayor Lieutenant Gerald Dudley.
Here.
Councilmember Kathy Hines.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Ronnie Walker.
Here.
Thank you. As staff presenting, when I call your name, please respond with the affirmative. City Manager Barton Watkins.
Here.
City Attorney David Huffman.
Here.
Interim City Clerk Michelle Parker Evans.
Here.
Public Works Director Gary Smith.
Here.
Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese.
Here.
Community Engagement Manager Morgan Lassiter.
Here.
Police Chief Brian Long.
I believe he's upstairs.
Is upstairs, okay. I'm sure he'll be here as presenter. Assistant City Manager Development Services Nolan Kirkland.
Here.
Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
Yes, evening.
Engineering Director Todd Lambert.
Here.
Inspection Director Russell Williams.
Here.
Recreation and Parks Director Tony Laws. Tony, I'm speaking.
He's upstairs.
Okay. And Water Resources Director Bob Patterson. Bob upstairs.
He's upstairs as well.
And Planning Manager Conrad Almeda.
Here.
Thank you very much. So, we do have ten items on the agenda tonight, so it's a pretty big agenda, but I think some of them are going to be, um, uh, we've heard some of the, some of the presentations before, and go a little quick, so let's try to get through these as quick as possible. Item A, residential recycling contract. We recommend as Public Works Director Gary, so may I, Gary?
Good evening. I'd like to give you an update on the residential recycling contract and answer any questions that you may have regarding the new contract. Uh, just to give you a little quick background, uh, the current residential recycling contract is scheduled to expire on June thirtieth. GFL has provided bi-weekly automated herb side recycling for the City of Arlington since July of twenty-twelve. They service roughly eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty single-family herb side households. And the current recycling fee per resident is at two twenty-nine per month. We've been very pleased with the service GFL has provided over the past ten years. So, the contract coming up for renewal in September, our purchasing department issued a new request proposal. We knew that going into this, there will be several factors, labor, fuel costs, equipment costs, that will greatly impact pricing that we would receive. So, on October twenty-second, had a bid open in, uh, GFL and Republic Services, they were the only two companies that responded. GFL submitted a price of six dollars and twenty-four cents per month for five years with five mutually agreed upon extensions. Republic Services responded that they could not quote, and they would not quote due to some of our terms and conditions that they could not agree to. So, we did, uh, after receiving these, we looked at some other options to try to lower the monthly cost, but those options, they came with a lot of financial risk to the city. So, as a result, the recommendation is to award the residential recycling contract, GFL environmental, contract rate of six twenty-four per household per month. We've added the projected average consumer price index increase, which amounts to thirty-two cents, and we've added the cost of recycled parts and administrative fees, which is capitalized to thirty-four cents. This brings our new total average annual cost at one million, literally one point five million, which equates to six ninety a month for the recycling fees. Again, this will be a five-year contract with five one-year mutually agreed upon extensions. We would have seamless continuity of service between the city and GFL. Uh, no issues that come with the transition of service since GFL currently has the contract, and they are the current service provider. And the burden of service resources, the staffing, disposal of the recyclers, what's their collective, that disposal location, all the disposal cost risk, those will be with the contractor. So, again, a monthly recycling fee would increase from two twenty-nine a month to six ninety a month effective July first.
That? Any, any questions? Thank you. Um, I think in looking over these, I recall that all of our neighboring municipalities are kind of in the same boat. Everybody's seeing the increases that are going to be on all the plans that are around. I guess, uh, both great and bad, and we're at the exact same prices. Any questions from anybody? And we're looking for this to be on the consensus agenda, is that right?
This is, we're pouring those councils, don't you?
Yeah, that's good for everybody. We'll record that. Gary, thank you, and thank you and your team, Charlie, and our work last few weeks. Got a tough one.
Mayor, if I can just mention one thing on that, to Gary and Nolan both defense on this contract. The, the contract that we got ten years ago was ridiculously low during that timeframe. The first time we ever all looked at, Nolan was thinking this, and we dropped out of chairs when they agreed that price.
Yeah, they were, yeah, significantly lower than the other bit, but, um, we went back to them and said, you know, really concerned about the, you know, if we could perform this over the ten-year period. But they were convinced they could, and they did a great job, honestly. Um, rally that are up in the contract or did it, um, and asked us, you know, several times for, you know, summary considerations, but they've gone on to contracts that we've set for their pricing. So, yeah, I think that's what you're talking about.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Next item on the agenda is the American Rescue Plan Act, Arkham, potential projects. So, uh, we'll turn it over to Peggy Reese, Energy Commission Director for.
Thank you, Council, for the opportunity to be here tonight. Um, basically, we are here to seek your, to seek your guidance as to the next steps that you would like to take. In your agenda packet, you were provided a list of potential projects, and we have three separate lists. One list is for the ten million, that would be on the loss revenue category for the ARCA funds. The remainder, which is about a million three, because we already used one hundred and thirty-seven thousand for COVID expenses, that is on the restricted list. And then the third list is pretty much already decided. Those are funds that we have received through the state budget. So, we're go, we will concentrate primarily on the first two lists. Those two lists have also been labeled, all the projects have been labeled as a council priority or deferred maintenance. So, we are here tonight, um, Nolan has the list pulled up. We are here that we can tackle some of these items, tackle some of those decisions tonight, or we can, um, certainly, we want to do what the council will be, we want more time to look at it. Um, we can bring it up at another work session, or if you would like, you can set a special meeting aside just to tackle this, but we're, staff is ready to do what council would like us to do.
Mayor, I think in our previous conversation, you suggested maybe to make sure we go through some of the agenda items, start on the state budget, and then on the restricted list, and then see how time goes.
It was my suggestion that we break it out to look at all three of this independently, because, you know, the one point three million is complicated, it's got its own set, the, the state, um, has its own, uh, guidelines, and then we know about the ten billion. So, you know, it was interesting looking over this over the weekend to try to kind of grasp some of the things that's in there. You know, I personally need, need some time to really think about that thing. I don't know.
I do.
Anybody else has any questions now, or the list is great, and I appreciate you guys putting it so that it's A, B, C, and we can look at it and really hone in on it.
Peggy, could you speak as briefly about the state guidelines on that, that's a deal with ARCA money?
The, the state budget piece?
Yes.
Um, the state included in their budget, they included, um, these projects, and, um, our understanding is that it's coming through D E Q, but, and our understanding is also that it's being funded through some parcel money, and, um, which leaves me, gives me some pause because there are certain, one of the clear rules from ARCA is that we cannot spend money on expanding water and sewer lines. And another rule that we feel like is clear from the school of government is that if we choose to do something that is a government service, but we choose to contract that out, the sub recipient has to follow those same rules. So, um, there, there leaves a little bit of a question there about, but these projects are what we're, my understanding it is specifically designated in the budget contract for these specific items.
Mr. O'Neal, I had to, we have received inquiries from Representative Rattell over the last four, ten, last week. He's kind of reached out on our behalf to see if these funds moving, you know, through various state agencies, Mr. Patterson or Water Resources was in touch, and sharing that with Representative Rattell. I think I may have pushed an email out on that identifying, we think some of this money has come through Department of Commerce for the items, E S I two, E S I three, both E S I threes and E S I twelve, and then we think that the downtown water sewer line process will come through, uh, D W I, uh, one of the D E Q divisions. So, all that's still to be worked out. Representative Rattell said, Sam, hop that forward to trust me to that move, and you can do that on behalf of us and other cities and counties. So, we're weighing rules and, you know, regulations and processes, not all that's going to happen. So, I guess it is important that that fits, that nets out fifteen point eight seven million. That is in addition to our formula allocation of eleven point five million. So, that's, we appreciate that, Detective Siders. Mike, this one.
Mayor Buckner, would you like to come back at the March work session for one, for the ten million or the restricted use?
What's, what's everybody's thoughts on that? It's not good.
Just so I'm clear, the state budget is pretty, that part is pretty much fixed. We figured out what that's going to look like. So, we're now concentrating on what's restricted and what's unrestricted.
Correct.
And, um, I guess my only concern was, I, I felt that I wanted to look at this in terms of investments in the future, um, and what would that look like? It's that would, that would move the money out to help everybody. But I, I really wasn't sure whether some of these things could actually come under that, um, whether they were allowed. So, do we need to kind of look at each of those things to figure that out?
Are you speaking about items that are actually, that we provided on the list?
They're already on the, they're on the list, deferred maintenance or, uh, council priorities.
Um, this list is kind of geared toward what's, um, allowed to spend on by the ARCA rules, but there are some state guidelines as far as broadband is concerned, and the cities are very limited on that. Um, there's a very narrow needle that we would need to thread in order to be able to provide broadband. So, um, they did, um, in the most, uh, last year's session, the state did give some more authority to counties, but, um, most of it is to internet service providers. So, the cities, but as far as I know, um, everything else is, um, is good. The restricted list, there are a lot of qualifications and hoops to jump through.
So, Ms. Sack, I'd like to answer the question. Peggy and her team have done a remarkable job down, uh, in tune with this. They've attended numerous seminars, they've ran the thick, man, I think they have a degree of confidence in these, these are all eligible, with the caveat of.
The only caveat that we have a little concern about is the broadband, but the rest only we feel pretty good about.
Okay, but, oh, right, but if they made the list, they're still a part of that.
I'm sorry, if they made the list?
We only put things on the list that look like they'd be able to be threaded.
Right, exactly, exactly. The one thing that's on there that is, um, is like you have a circle for what is able to be funded by ARCA, and then there's a circle of what state law and where they join, what are those common projects? And this is it, except for the broadband. The broadband, I think, um, I would, you know, steer away from.
The broadband, would, would, is that a different way? Broadband is eligible from a federal viewpoint, but it's federal, kind of has some laws that may restrict cities from tying up things. And that remains to be, we're not the only one asking that question. I've been asked by other states, but everything needs the federal definition of eligibility.
Any other questions, anybody? So, what, is it, pleasure, Council, that we look through this? Maybe if we've got any questions, we can reach out to Peggy and get this on March, uh, work session, and, and spend a little bit more time after we're educated on it.
That'd be good.
Semi-hypothetical, we don't really know that we don't understand.
Would there, would there be value, Council members, would be value in going, like doing that? We've done this at some previous planning retreats or formats, or just a quick overview of what each item is, or does everybody have a pretty decent understanding of? I mean, we've tried to put as much in as we could, without getting too lengthy. Would that be valuable to start off the meeting with?
You're talking about for, for March?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I think so, and probably, we're all familiar, and I've had that list recirculated. Ronnie, you, you got the list, too.
I do, yes.
Um, but, you know, I'd like to hear from my colleagues what's important to them, and Kathy's got things that she's identified. I'd like to, maybe if we could share that amongst ourselves, so we can kind of get educated and get our, our findings right into what is important to each and every one of us, and that'll probably help us come together a little more far.
Seems like a good opportunity for at least a small retreat. It's pretty complicated, and spent a lot of time on it, and, you know, just a, a way for all of us to recover, I think, if we could, twenty-nine to March, if that's possible.
Yeah, but, you know, I, I personally, if Harold has something that he's really interested in and has something that he wants to spend some time on, or things you have, or Bob, or Ronnie, I, I'd like to know so I could educate myself on those implications, and make that meeting a lot, you know, a lot smoother. So, and likewise, I'll, I'll share my thoughts with everybody. You know, because we all have some things that we've, um, been working on all the way, and we have as a council as well, and then there's the, you know, pretty good list of, like, staff teams or staff components, so getting all that to merge together is going to be a bit heavy, then.
So, you're saying, talk about the, the March work session?
Yeah, I think we, we could, if we feel like it's going to need more time, if we want to, um, accelerate the start of the work session, maybe, and spend a little bit more time on it, um, it, it may be even optimistic to think we can get through this in one meeting, you know, one session. I mean, it's going to come up on time, but you're, you're probably going to have more questions than answers, again, on top of considering.
Should we just start at four o'clock, you know?
Yeah. We could start at four, and give us an extra hour, and, um, see how it goes, and if this takes two or three meetings, I think it's worth the time to do it, right?
I just don't, I don't want the discussion to be compressed, so that makes, that sounds like a good suggestion.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree. Um, if we don't really try rush through it, it takes more than one, one at a time. Is that good with everybody?
Peggy, you mentioned the restricted funds.
Yes, sir.
Do you represent in particular?
Yes, sir.
Can you just, um, expound on that a little bit in terms of what you, you mean, you, you're, what?
Well, um, the ten million is, um, we are, the city is claiming the ten million loss revenue, and so we can spend that on any general government services that the city concurrently did.
Right.
Um, then, so that takes care of that, but in the, um, restricted, uh, we have to determine which area it falls under, and as far as the four categories, ARCA money, premium pay, infrastructure, um, loss revenue, and economic development, I believe, premium pay, loss revenue, water, yeah, public health, and negative economic impact. So, we, on this list that we provided on the strict, and there are, you have to provide justifications as to why you did or why you chose that certain project. If it's in a Q C T, which stands for Qualified Census Trap, you, um, pretty much have almost an easy go of it. So, anything, um, for instance, the light poles and lights at City Park, both is two, three, four, and five in the trap. Um, according to our, looking at the Q C T map, that falls in the Qualified Census Trap, and so, um, doing those light poles, which is desperately needed because they're rotting and they need to be replaced, that would be an item that we could easily justify doing, as well as providing public safety with security and cameras at a couple of parks. Those would be, um, justified by, easily justified, easier justified.
How much is that the restricted cost?
I'm sorry?
How much money is in it? Was it one point five?
Originally one point five, but the council area approved last year to use one hundred and thirty-seven thousand for, um, for COVID expenses, and that's just for paying employees the first eighty hours that they are out with either COVID exposure or COVID itself. So, we incurred one hundred and thirty-seven already, and we already incurred another two hundred and nine thousand of that, um, that is right there. So, you know, that's one of the items that do not require as much justification. Did that answer your question, Eric?
Yes, Mayor.
Well, I'm going back to the fiber issue here. Yeah, and I understand from the very beginning, there was questions about what we could do with that and we could not do with that. So, basically, you're saying that in, uh, the broadband conduit down town, which is five hundred thousand, and build out Highway seventy to G S O, one point, um, one point two hundred million and quarter, that would be allowable?
No, sir.
It would not?
No, sir. It's allowable under ARCA, but it's not allowable under, um, under the state law for cities. Um, cities are not allowed to build and put in fiber and, and sell it with the intention of selling it to I S Ps, internet service providers.
So.
We can build, we could build broadband in a neighborhood to provide free service, and they can, we can build broadband for us at, like, at the North Park or the Springwood Park. We can put in the fiber to provide the security connection to the security cameras for the safety of, um, of the citizens, but that, but anything where we would be selling to the I S Ps, my understanding is that it's not allowed by cities.
So, technically, then, uh, the downtown and the Highway seventy, that's one million and seven hundred fifty thousand dollars combined, uh, that's not allowed then?
We go.
Yes.
Number five, I understand. What are they?
There's two.
Right.
So, that's kind of off tape.
Right.
So, even if we did that, the general fund, if we did that?
Right. Because those are, again, it, it's, it's very hard to create these lists. This list is ARCA eligible, but for state laws, it's not, so we will take them off of the list for our March discussion.
So, what the state said some years ago that we weren't allowed to play about a ring?
Right.
So, really, it doesn't matter if it's eligible or not, yeah.
I guess so, quite a lot.
So, Kathy, so you couldn't even use general funds to do that, the answer was no?
No.
So, it's illegal?
Oh, okay.
State law, state law, legal.
Just to split a hair here for you, you know, the fiber connection to Burlington Greenport, you could do that, you could use it for other city services, if there was, were other city services that didn't buy for the fiber, and then at some point in the future, if the statutes change, and, and allow you to, at least those assets, you could consider doing that. And the, the, part of that project, we all remember these conversations, was to link us with the Greensboro Emergency Services Center in downtown Greensboro, and there's value to Greensboro, value to us, Greensboro at some point, they didn't commit the dollars in their budget, which never got, got rolling, so there's value for us to be connected to them for lots of reasons, mostly in the public safety areas. And then you would have that available, you'd have that infrastructure available if you can figure out something in the future, if there's some chance to stay.
If the state law changes in the future.
Well. Disagreement.
Okay, any other questions on that? All right, thank you, Peggy. The next item, item C, is an update on unsheltered population, so at this time, we're at last to get to Peggy, who's managing Morgan Lassiter, and his chief, Brian Long.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, people on the air, I'm here to give you a brief update on the meetings that have been occurring over the, um, past months and even years, as a staff team to talk about, um, primarily the downtown district and, and what we've seen in our homeless population that's there. So, that has been a kind of multi-departmental staff team, and we've been joined, really, since the beginning by J J Carter, who's our Allied Churches Director, which we've really appreciated him being a voice in those. Um, so, I'll just frame this a little bit and talk about, kind of, uh, the two ways that we've, we've, we've realized we're kind of approaching this. So, it's managing homelessness, kind of on a day-to-day basis within community, and then solving homelessness, right? And so, those conversations obviously meld together and go together. Um, as a staff team, I think early on, we recognized kind of where, where our roles were as a municipal government, and then where we needed, uh, support and collaboration when you kind of get to that bigger issue of solving homelessness. So, I think what I'll talk a little bit about tonight is kind of what, um, we've, we've, we've done kind of managed, and then talk a little bit about, uh, you know, what our hope is to kind of be part of that greater conversation, too, in our community. part of that greater conversation too in our community. So I know specifically in downtown, we've begun to talk about that we kind of, you know, have a core group of folks that we know are, are really in downtown most of the time. And it's five to seven individuals that, that I think our shop owners know, I think our law enforcement know, I think Jay knows them well as well. So when we, when we kind of look at that, that group ebbs and flows. We've spent a lot of time talking specifically about what's going on with those specific individuals. And then Jay's done a lot of good work in community to try to make sure those folks are, are getting opportunities and trying to connect them to resources. And I'll also talk a little bit about what we have done as a city, recognizing that our historic depot is an area that, that folks like to congregate in. So most of y'all probably know a lot of this, but we have installed some lighting. The police department has funded some additional security cameras that are in that area. We've also gone through and kind of thinned out our shrubbery that's within, kind of encompassing of the depot area and had the power cut to some of those outlets out there that we recognized that, you know, maybe were a draw for folks to be able to, to kind of set up and, and get some, some power. We also have stayed on top of with Public Works and with our cemetery and grounds crew with kind of cleaning and maintaining that area to keep it as sanitary as we can for our community. So really looking at this as from a safety perspective, not just for our patients of downtown, but safety of the individuals that, you know, are there as well. So kind of have to look at that twofold. And as you may know, the restaurants that were located there, were built there, we're partnering with TransDed, so it's running Link Transit for us, right? And so they're, they're able to lock those when Link Transit isn't running. So, you know, kind of taking the steps that we can to environmentally help, you know, make that area safe as much as we can. We've also partnered with the BDC even before the BDC was a part of us, but to kind of hold some information sessions for our downtown community. So we were able to kind of do a shelter mythbusters info session, just so that they understood kind of what the options were for those folks. And also, we looked at our panhandling ordinance and just making sure that people understood what was in that, what, when to call, law enforcement. So really have community relations division is taking a proactive approach at making sure that we're educating our community in downtown. So I think Chief Wong's got a little bit to say about more of those efforts.
Sure. Mayor and Council, thanks for having me. So as you can imagine, this is a priority for police in downtown, especially in the downtown area where I think this most often comes up in a very visible way. So when I look at the issue and have looked at it, I think I've been a part of this group process since 2017 or 2018. Now, I really look at three things. Our capacity to respond as a police agency to that area when needed. Geographically, we're very well placed, especially in this downtown corridor, to be able to make those responses. I don't think we've ever had an issue with, with that particular component of response. And then there's just the component of patrolling the area. So a lot of our outskirts areas are harder to get to at times, but we make those efforts as well. But with the police department, once again, in the downtown area, I don't think there's a lot of issue with our presence in the downtown. And then, and then as police chief, I really get focused on what are the crimes that are being committed in our downtown area. The state classifies Part I crimes as what we would consider a more serious crime, assaulted behavior, robberies, and things of that nature. So when I look at that and have looked in the past week preparing for this, the downtown represents just right at 1% of the city's total Part I crime. Assessing that from a square mileage perspective or a total crime perspective, I think that demonstrates that overall, we have a fairly safe, very safe downtown area. But we also recognize that there's a quality of law component to this as well and, and perception issues that go along with the unsheltered population in downtown. We strategized over the past three years, this is definitely, in my opinion, the police department has to be a component of the process. It's also a community-based issue of how to address unsheltered in our downtown without doing any particular harm from a constitutional perspective. The laws have changed over the years. Certainly not the lawyer, or a lawyer in the room, but I'm very aware that the Supreme Court makes specific rulings as it relates to the First Amendment in begging or asking for money panhandling. And they've also made rulings as it relates to occupying public spaces. We have ordinances in place that oftentimes help us address some of these issues. I guess, but the example that I use is it's not unlawful to stand on the sidewalk. You can't block it, you can't prohibit commerce or free flow of traffic on the sidewalk. But just weird presence, even for long extended periods of time, really becomes complicated for police to address or enforce. Those are the issues that we have found, I guess, over the last few years. The cameras, I think, have helped. But I also wanted to take just an opportunity from a statistical perspective. We're always responding to crimes in progress, and if validated, then we make appropriate charges when necessary without using names. There's at least one individual that's very commonly in our downtown area that's been charged with 28 misdemeanors since 2012, was charged with seven misdemeanors in downtown Burlington in 2021. But those were almost consecutive ones, charged in January, charged in February, charged in March. And I think that this is not one of those situations, because most of the offenses in downtown are what we call nuisance crimes or very low-level misdemeanors. We're not going to be able to arrest our way out of the situation as it relates to the people that enjoy spending time in our downtown area. And in some cases, do create some issues for us that we need to continue to find creative ways to address with the current bond policy as is in Alaman's County as well. Oftentimes on these low-level offenses, as we have to or required by law to take them to the jail, if they are not given a secure bond, we're also required to basically bring them back to the police or to carry or arrest and provide them with safe, so at least a safe for our officer. It's multi-passative, but we look forward to continuing to work to address the issues and answering the questions that you may have.
That was depressing. So I heard what you said about what we couldn't do and, you know, the difference that you reveal, and so what can we do to help eliminate? Because I hear from citizens about people downtown drinking, I hear people speaking on their first to drug use. And I've heard all about the, what was it, the verbal library, a chair, a table, or something?
The bench.
Thank you, that's correct, what it is. So that has disappeared evidently. So we're just going to continue to go through this cycle. You're telling me that we've been talking about this since 2017, 2018, and we still have people complaining? So what are we going to do? Just continue up, people complain?
No, I mean, I think from a law enforcement perspective, I don't want you to miss here. So we're committed to charging crimes when they occur. I'm here to be very candid with regard to the overall current system that we have with regard to bond and also with regard to just the offenses that occur most often in our downtown area are not likely to be bondable offenses. So we are literally using the resource to take them to ground and bring them back in some cases. That's not, in fact, I don't have all the answers, but I want you also to think that we're just sticking the head in the sand. I think the longer, long-term solutions do come through some resources. And I think, I don't want to speak for Mr. Baker, he's with us, but several of these people have been offered and either declined or refused or misused resources that they are provided with. But the enforcement alone for these low-level offenses is a very temporary, it might fix the problem on Friday, but the problem is likely to recur on Saturday because of bigger issues that exist within, within these individual's lives, right? I am fairly familiar with most of these, and I would say that they are, they are dealing with multiple issues and sometimes what I would call polyissues, poly use, poly alcohol use combined with mental health issues, which compound for the situation. I don't, I don't think that probably did a lot to say exactly what we're going to do to combat it and may just demonstrate that the issue is not Burlington centered, this is a national issue.
Sure.
When you, when you look across the country, seems to be growing instead of shrinking.
And what are other communities doing? Have we reached out to a Greensboro Durham and tried to figure out what they're doing?
Yes, we, I know Peter has reached out to a couple of communities and talked to them. Is that, that the new?
Yeah, I sure can. So, sorry if I get moved into your eyesight, Councilmember. What a lot of communities have done is assigned specific resources to the issue. So rather than having uniformed police officers approaching their downtown, they will have a, a different type of mental health-oriented squad that walks around and provides direct services to unsheltered populations, not just in a downtown, but citywide. They work closely with housing partners to work on the housing aspect of this, and I know that Mr. Baker does that as well and we do when we can with our Burlington Housing Authority. But, so there's a, there's a patrol component and specific mental health and drug and other services that are not traditional sworn police officers. There's a housing element that's worked on to find affordable or single resident occupancy housing within a community or without that community, wherever that might be. And then there are a lot of collaborations between communities. So I think Chief Wong said it best, homelessness is not a Burlington-only problem. There's homeless people in Meven, in Graham, throughout Alaman's County, so it's a regional problem. And we need to lean on those regional resources to build a team to try and address it. The diversion center that the county's working on would be a resource that would help in some cases. There are some other resources that are available. There are some things that Alaman's County is eligible for to take the lead on that municipalities are not, just the way our statutes work. So teamwork, having specific teams to address this and focusing on housing and that workforce is part of housing and finding, you know, jobs and training for these individuals.
Pardon? Correct me if I'm wrong, and Mr. Baker, you may want to correct this, but I, earlier in the summer when we met and discussed this issue, you made a comment to me that there's a certain number of people who do not want housing, and their primary objective is to be on the streets.
Yes, sir. That's, that's in housing, in homelessness, we call that the 10% rule. There are 10% of the population that do not want to be housed. So they are not looking for a place to stay, they don't want to pay rent, this is things that they're not wanting to do. And this is national data across the board. So those, the individuals that we're kind of referring to on a continual basis would fall under this 10%. I can tell you from a programmatic standpoint, we house those individuals, and as Chief Wong mentioned, the individuals subleased their apartments and did not stay and were back downtown, or they used the locations and not a residential mount. So it is very hard to house those individuals when that is not their main goal. And also to note that most of those individuals, because I know we're talking about resources, most of those individuals have monthly incomes already. And we've kind of provided them with links to RHA, which is a voluntary thing. So if they do not decide that they want to go to RHA, they don't have to. Our group will not go to RHA or they will not receive those services. Even in the onset of the diversion center, that will then become that issue. It's that if an individual decides that I'm not doing it, because they're not a forced thing at this point, that individual will go through a process and ultimately, as Chief Wong talked about, be back into the same area for life. Multisystemic therapy and how we all get together and understand that, I think, has to be a bigger piece. I am an advocate for trying to show the correlation between homelessness and affordable housing. I think most of you in here know that that is kind of what I've been talking about since at least 2018, around affordable housing and what does that look like. Offering safe housing to individuals is important, you know? And I think that's a conversation or a topic that we may, council members and mayor, that we may have to explore as of day-to-day, is how does the lack of affordable housing kind of correlate with homelessness to a core group? And I think Peter and I have had some discussions similar around that and Morgan as well, and that may be something that we can look into, to have a conversation with council around how housing affects homelessness. Because typically, people look at it from a different standpoint, right? We see 350 people at the shelter a year, at least 350. Everybody at the shelter receives a job offered within the first five days of entering the shelter. These are not minimum wage jobs. These jobs are 12, 13, 14 dollars an hour. Our problem though comes in when I have talked about, he's done everything that I need to do for Bob to do, where do I find the housing? And we know that shelters are temporary, so Bob could not stay with me for years until we find housing. So what do we do at that point? And I think maybe it would be better to have, or I propose to have some conversation around that topic and how do we move people into housing? And being very honest, you'll still have a 10%, even if we were at around zero, you'd still have a 10%.
So the question, I think, Councilmember Wall, your question is, what do we do about the 10%?
Right. There's a question.
Because the 90% is a much bigger, more collaborative effort to solve, but I think there are multiple people in this room that have heard within the last week or 10 days from some downtown employers, some pretty serious safety concerns. They've actually had, they've been approached at parking lots, we still have some lighting issues. And I think based on the feedback that I've received from the community, it's, it's probably the 10%. And it's the, the safety aspect, the sheer safety aspect of someone feeling comfortable walking from a parking lot to a downtown restaurant and, or from their office building to a downtown restaurant and then back to the parking lot.
Tell you a private conversation, excuse me, I'm sorry. That's a question. In a private conversation that we had, you said you and Mayor D. Darnold, there are probably six people that have repeated offenders. Is that still true?
That is correct.
Okay, so if we have a place for them to go, they're not going, right?
No.
Okay.
Or they would go temporarily, we would see relief, maybe for 30 days.
Okay. But then they're going to be back on the street?
Yes, sir. Same in the, as in staying in the shelter. What we found is the core group is actually living in the shelter right now, but they're still creating the same amount of mischief.
Sure.
Although they're in the shelter.
Right.
So it's not unique to the shelter or homelessness, it's kind of unique to the individual and what services can we reasonably provide for this 10%.
So I would ask you, is it, does it, do we have any purpose of creating a roundtable discussion about this topic with the police chief, downtown court people, city staff, somebody else, council? We bring that group together, and again, I've been, I'm lame since 17, 18, that's what they, is it worthy of our time?
I think it is, Councilmember. What I see on a daily basis is how do we make the correlation between homelessness and affordable housing? And if we can't make that correlation, then we don't mean homelessness, right? Those, those towns, they have ended homelessness, very few by the way, but they, they have ended homelessness. The city and county have worked together to create a affordable housing. And what does that look like though is much of a challenge, right? Because those rents are considerably lower compared to what we see in apartment complexes that are going up and that are going up and just there.
Okay.
And also Jake made a comment earlier that I found, who I didn't, this was his past summer. And I actually came down one night after talking to him and, and talked to some of the people down here. And the first thing he said to me, well, we won't go to the shelter because they have guidelines in terms of where we have to be in. Well, you already told me today before that you specifically reached out to these people and said that you were going to let them come in at a later time, not even. I responded back to the guy, of course, he didn't take that very, very lightly. So I read what I'm trying to get to, and I'm not trying to say give up here. This is a heck of a problem. It's not something we're going to buy a way out of because it's, it's, it's much more complex than throwing some money at it when you've got mental health issues that tends to, and maybe I'm wrong, Jay, and I'll have to speak to you and anybody else in here, brought in the same, same situation. The whole mental health issue seems to be maybe the biggest issue, is that correct?
Combination of mental health and from what at least the people that I have contacted, severe alcoholism, and when I say severe, you know, 10, 10, 10, would really have on the scale of.
Yes.
Their BAC doesn't get below a certainness.
I think, I think councilmembers, you're right, it would be. And I talked to Morgan a little bit before we started, I think there is a opportunity for us to maybe meet, really have some real discussion around that system. And where systems may not be working or there may be a bottleneck on what we have now here in Alamance County, specifically the city of Burlington. There are some bottlenecks that, that I think in a smaller work group, we may be able to discuss a little more professionally and, and, and kind of really map out where we're seeing problems.
So, Mr. Wong, is that kind of what you see us doing, is getting a roundtable, as you call it, to start the process?
Yes, and I, I don't know what's really happened in that, since 15, to be honest with you. And I don't want to recreate something that's already taken place. But if Jason would think that maybe would help communication within the city, then I'm all for that committee being formed. And again, Chief, I, I, Morgan and I have the July on you to say, well, Ron, we've done all that before. We're just, we're not making progress, or yes, we've made progress. I'm open to put the dialogue, open communication back on the table, see if we can improve it and get back. So I'll take your lead on that.
And also, Mr. Wong, I think we go back to mental health. I believe the county mental health department's got to be involved in this.
Sure.
This is not just a one swipe deal here. And hardest from a staff standpoint on things we can do, that there's, there's the issue of homelessness and there's the feeling of safety or lack thereof by patrons and those that are frequently downtown. And two, two radically different topics, two radically different conversations. Obviously, from downtown economic development standpoint, from some of our major employers downtown, it's, it's a requirement, safety is a requirement for their employees as they're walking, you know, all hours of the night to their cars, to, to parking lots, things like that. I still think we have a severe shortage of light in downtown specifically. It was mentioned to me last week about certain quarters. And, you know, we, I think we need to address that piece as well because we're not going to solve the safety piece through the, the perspective of those patrons through just dealing with those six individuals. I mean, it's just not much we can do until lines are crossed. And I hear you loud and clear, that becomes a, a difficult topic. But the things that we can do to create a safer feeling environment, and whether it's patrol, more presence by officers. I understand, I heard, we've allowed and clear about assign specific resources for people walking around, but those that are walking through their car at 12 o'clock at night will walk towards us. They don't want to see somebody that they know is going to, going to be with them. Or they will clear lighting to know, you know, I, I can see, see clearly and I don't have any issues here. So I think if we look at it from that perspective too, that would be important. Because I think from, from my perspective, what I'm hearing most is the safety aspect. And I'm hearing it from individual patrons and I'm hearing it from individuals alike, so. No one, the lighting, I have lighting contracts to Duke Energy, do not.
Sure.
And I'm not trying to get too specific here, but, but that, that contract calls for what metal they like.
We really do, no. We agree, a couple of years back, we increased the lights. But we certainly can look and see what alternatives or maybe to add additional lighting.
I think what Mayor and I talked about was also thinking about pedestrian focused lighting. This is, you know, we have the street lights that, obviously those are designed to light the street and it happens to also cover the sidewalk. So I think some of the feedback we have received maybe around a valid pedestrian level lighting as a supplement.
What y'all thoughts on that? It's cool, Jason, Jay, both. You guys see, y'all do work of it every day, helping.
Yeah.
If you, if you took more lighting, is that, you think that has a, obviously in terms of people, just say that the employee working, walking is good, but does that impact the homeless person's desire to move on to another safer residence, a safer place?
It is a deterrent from, from some regular, some unusual behavior, yes. Same in the shelter, we had to reposition our lights that are actually on the shelter now. We have stationary lights and we actually had to go to those that could move 360 to angle on to create, to stop some traffic that would happen at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning in that district society.
So if we could, I would like to see us, from a, from a what we can do perspective as opposed to, gosh, we don't know what to do, could we at least start looking at that?
Yes, sir.
And see what the cost is there and see how that can maybe fit into some of these projects that are, are the, are the leaders. And I mean, if funding is an issue, let's start there because we've got to, we've got to be sure we've got to save America for those who are working and those who are supporting our downtown businesses. Any, any other items on that?
Mayor, one thing I would add is in the report that came back, this was the member tonight, which was the, sort of the outline for Morgan's presentation this evening. It does talk about the group that did this work recommends next steps, building a broader countywide coalition to address the unsheltered population while integrating additional nonprofit mental health service providers into the group. So we can certainly make that part of the roundtable discussion. As I said, we need, there's things we need to keep talking about and keep working through.
Well, if you want to convene a group, then reach out to Councilmember Wong, see if anyone else wants to. This night, I think, is good to get started.
Yes, sir, good sir.
Next item on the agenda is item three, the water control act, update. This time we'll recognize City Manager Harvey Watkins, City Manager Joel Kirkland, Department of Health and Director Peter Fishel, and Engineering Director Todd Lambert.
Thanks, Mayor. Peter takes the seat, he's going to lead, lead us through this conversation and update, update council on where we stand on the water quality property. As you know, there's been a lot of discussion, two documents that Peter's getting ready to draw your attention to. We did include in the packet all three of the articles that you see policy watching over the room, with part one and part three, there was a third article, a little shorter that you talked about, some of the air quality testing, that you call in the packet for your review. The other document that you may not have seen before, which is very interesting and Peter may represent in his remarks, is we have a sort of a timeline prepared by a gentleman with the state of North Carolina that's responsible, that's the sort of the champion and coordinator of this effort, it goes back to 1927 with the old rayon plan. And it carries to what is happening today and the, the status of the studies today. So just make sure everybody understands, to see that, it's a good document, very interesting, but also paints a little picture of where we have been and where we're going. Peter, I'll be with you.
Thank you, Manager Watkins, and good evening, Mayor and members of council. It's great to be here in person with you. I have a brief presentation on the status of the property. We'll be talking a little bit between us about different steps and then some of the city's enforcement efforts. Please at any time interrupt us and ask any questions you have about the information in your packets or what you see before you on the presentation. Some basic property information about the site, it's a rather large site, 22 plus acres. There's some conflicting information on how much building area is actually out there. We think it's around 600,000, about 500,000 of that is usable. Some properties that are out there are just not in good shape. There are 30 different points of construction, so they're not exactly, they don't exactly look like 30 buildings, but 30 different phases of construction over, over 60 years. So you can imagine the way this thing's been added on to and pieced on to throughout the different years of its use. It was made, it was vacant, vacated in the late 90s and then sold by the US GSA General Services Administration to a group called Oakdale Investment, which bought this property, the parking lot across the street, and what they called the spur track, which is now a Walmart. Those were all purchased in 2004. And then the main plant property itself, not the parking lot, not what's in the Walmart, just the, just the plant facility ordered by Graham Oakdale and Church and other rooms. That was last purchased in 2018, so it is a privately owned and held facility. Some of the use history, which is in this very convenient timeline, but it's been a lot of different things over the years. First constructed as a rayon plant, Johnson Rayon Plant in 1927, 28. And then, of course, what we, we know very well in our community was the Faircraft Aircraft, or Fairchild, rather, Aircraft Company built the composite wooden frame planes for training purposes in early World War II. Then Firestone, the tank, and other munitions refurbishment, and armored vehicle refurbishment in the factory for about a year. Thereafter, Western Electric leased it with contracts with the Department of Defense to, to start undergoing the Nike missile program. And then they partnered with AT&amp;T and Bell Laboratories throughout the 50s and 60s to continue the development of the guided missile system, the Nike missile system. After that was decommissioned in 1968, the anti-bullistic or non-proliferation, I'm screwing that up, but Nixon signed the non-proliferation treaty with, in China with the Russians and that kind of took down all of our advanced missile system research and programs. And the, the plant slowly dropped employees and activity, leading up into the 80s and 90s. And then AT&amp;T's communication side took over the facility and leased it for several years. And that's where the speakerphone was invented and developed here in Burlington, in that facility. Obviously, with all those different uses over a long period of time, there's been some site contamination, most significantly to the soils and the groundwater beneath the site. I want to say there have been at least six underground storage tanks of various fuels and heating oils removed and closed on this site over time. So those different underground storage tanks. And this little circle right here is what was called in the industry, the waste accumulation pad. So every piece of metal or every solvent that went through this facility, went through, there's some, inside this building right here, there's some aeration basins, basically just ground water tanks sitting there. And all bad stuff will go in there and start to filter out and accumulate here on this waste accumulation pad and then be hauled off by trucks and other places. Some of it went into our system, some of it, of course, went into the ground. The US Army, who was the main tenant and owner for a long period of time on this property, is one of the responsible parties for all of that contamination, as is the Lucent Technologies, or the folks that used it at the very end. And then the, the crew member owns the property also has some, some responsibility for contamination on site. These buildings were built with a lot of asbestos and painted with lead paint and there may be some other contaminants that were brought in above the ground. So an easy way to think of it is everything that's above the surface is the private property owner's responsibility. Everything below the surface is the responsibility of the US Army and Lucent Technologies, AT&amp;T. So with all that contamination comes a whole bunch of regulatory oversight. This property, it's under the purview of the US EPA Superfund, which is the, is the sort of common name for CIRCLER, or Comprehensive Environmental Response, Compensation and Liability Act. So that was the, the federal legislation that was passed in 1980 that gave the Economic, or Environmental Protection Agency the teeth it had to start attacking some of these sites. So NCD EQ is our lead agency. So the US Army, and everybody who works under the US Army is reporting back to NCD EQ who's managing this site. The US Army Environmental Command and then their partner in crime, the US Army Corps of Engineers, are the ones who are managing, the contractors on site, doing all the bidding that is required to get the site cleaned up. We have a couple of health departments locally here with Alamance County and with the state. Their role with, as it relates to this site is for any acute health issues. So if there is an imminent or a current health hazard, that's how they would be involved directly with this site. The city of Burlington's role is really, we're sort of the last stop on the train. So we are the ones who issue final permits and coordinate with the, the contractors after every single other one of these agencies has given a thumbs up to whatever work is required. So as a safe example, the current property owner wanted Duke Energy to put a power pole in. Well, you can't just dig a hole on this site because of the impact of the soil and the vapor. There's actually a restriction in the deed that says you need permission before you break soil on the site. So in order to do so, the contractor at Duke Energy had to dig a small hole, take a soil sample, have that sample tested, had to go back through all these channels and make sure that it was okay for that power pole to be dug in that one spot. That took maybe 45 to 60 days just to get that soil sample and put in that power pole. So they take it very seriously, we certainly do as a staff and certainly Nolan and Todd and all our staffs do as well. So there's a very long change for anything to happen. And then finally, of course, there's a lot of private responsibility on this site. So the private owner is, in addition to being responsible for everything that happens above the ground, is also responsible for the security of the site, for maintaining the site, for making sure that it is not regularly accessed and remains secure. So I mentioned CIRCLER and what that is, what it really is is a very long and expensive process to take some of these very contaminated sites and clean them up so that they can be used again. And at the very least, that they're not posing any sort of health risk in the short or long term for anybody who's on the site or around the site. So it's a very, several steps that go through this process. I circled this one, remedial investigation and feasibility study because this is the step that we are currently on. It's also the step that the property has been on for the last six or seven years. Remedial investigations are not typically something that happens very quickly, especially with a complex and a long history of contamination like our site has. So as I will say here in this next phrase, we're actually, our current status is that this is a supplemental remedial investigation that we're in right now. So a previous contractor started an RI in 2015, Arcadis. They finished it in late 2019, early 2020. DEQ had several questions about the results of the tests and all the work that happened in that first RI. So they went back to the drawing board. DOD rebid a second supplementary remedial investigation. According to some of their comments, it was a $400,000 contract. But this supplemental RI is intended to know more about the groundwater. There's a plume of groundwater that's the biggest concern on this site. It is creeping to the northeast, or northwest, rather, on site. And so they're trying to determine where it's going, how contaminated it is. Is it going to pose a health problem as it continues to gravitate in the direction it's moving in? And then also, in finding out all those questions, they start to understand how they can best solve, how they can treat it, how they can make it safe for everybody around on the site. So again, it's not uncommon for an RI, it takes several years to complete. I was a little surprised at looking through the records at the time that it has taken, the cost it's taken, et cetera. So that is the current status of the property and where it's at environmentally. And that's all the slides I have for y'all. You happy to answer any questions or pass it on to my colleague, Mr. Kirkland?
When's the last time you had any kind of communication with this group?
Which group?
The group that you said we were currently in phase.
Yes, so we had a meeting. Yes, so we had a meeting, it's October-ish, with consultants. So North Winds Jacobs is a joint venture, leading the engineering work for the supplemental RI, and TerraCon is working with them as well. I want to say it was September or October that we met with them for a scoping meeting, and then they went for a site visit.
Peter, let me add, with the disarm of any development of this property, does this remediation have to be completed prior to any development of this property?
Well, that is very determined on the use of the property. So there are currently deed restrictions on the site that will not allow residential, retail, or any sort of assembly use on the site until it has a no further action through the CIRCLER process. So any sort of residential, assembly, mass recreation, anything that would bring a lot of people in concentrated spaces on the site is not currently allowed. You would have to go through the full remedial action process, the full CIRCLER process, in order to get those deed restrictions removed and to have any use you'd like. Currently, there are some areas of the site that could be used as just plain storage or outdoor storage. Anything in a building would require vapor intrusion testing to be done regularly, and a lot of checks, a lot of remediation would need to happen within those properties to remove the lead paint and asbestos that is known to be present. So there's a pretty decent-sized hurdle for somebody to get those buildings usable, even if it's just a storage or a very light void used.
Okay, so, and the second question in terms of remediation here, how long, I mean, I know it requires some speculation, but what I gather is a fairly long process. You know, and so, and then can you forecast the length, years, what? Years?
Yeah, I think years is a good place to start. I'm certainly not qualified to answer that, and this site seems to be full of surprises every time we look at it, so I just wouldn't want to venture a guess. Because it's taken so long just to figure out what the problem is, where it is, and how to best look at it, that remedial investigation phase, it doesn't give me a lot of confidence that it's a short time.
One point, and I most likely probably hear, but you know, I don't know the truth, that people, you know, that approach me want to know when you're going to do something with the property, you know, for even, we don't own it. We can certainly get facilitated, but I don't, you know, I mean, I tell them what little I know, but to be honest, this remediation by practice, it takes years, in other words, if not, if not anything immediate, in other words, if you've really had a good plan for it, you know, roll it out, and somebody's going to bankroll, you still remediate and come through, right?
That's correct. There are some things that could be done concurrently on the property, so there could be some use happening as remediation is also happening, but that's, yes, there could be some opportunities, but I think you're right, is that it's going to be challenging, it's going to take some time to get things figured out and assessed.
Now, there are, there are developers and entities that, they really focus on projects like this. Madam, we've talked to them, that this entire process, which to us sounds like, I don't even know where to start, is pretty routine and matter-of-fact for them. Now, the timeline's obviously fixed and the flow, but it takes an expert in the dual sides of how to get a distressed property like this from concept to reality and a significant amount of finances, and there are a handful of players out there that do that, that have experience in doing that. And I think that's, you know, it's a complicated process, and it takes a specific set of skills to get that done.
When the city, so I realize that, Councilman Ward, I didn't fully answer your question. On a property like this, it's sometimes hard to see that progress is being done or taking place. Certainly, when we got here and we started work with S-Dev Team, a lot of the identification of the scale of the problem and the importance of the property were uncovered to a certain extent. We also developed some really strong relationships with the Army Corps team that's working on the facility and the DEQ team. I think up until that point, contact with the city was somewhat sporadic, and there just wasn't an understanding of what was happening on either side. So I think we, and now because of that, the public have a better understanding of the scale of the mountain to climb, I think. But I think it also has been a good opportunity for us to work closely with their permitting team and then also with some of the prospective developers. As Jim said it very well, in one of the slides from our S-Dev presentation, what I was reviewing before this, the environmental consultant that helped said, you know, this is not the area site we've ever seen. Yes, there's a lot of hurdles to come through, but it can be developed, there are people who will develop it, so if you think it can't be anything long-term, that's not entirely true. It could be something beneficial to the community, given the right developer and the right set of tools.
I just want to try to be accurate when I ask questions, you know, it's not, it's not really like an overnight thing, it just takes time, of course. Now, probably, I feel like we've made a lot of progress, it hasn't else getting all the parties together, you know, and they're thinking, you know, what needs to be done, and the parties cooperating, so, but anyway, for my purposes, just to sort of be, you know, be, you know, be as informational factual as I can, I've got to leave them, even if you rely on something, it won't go up next week, you know, it's going to take a while, so, anyway, thank you.
Next 25 years.
25, okay. Is that, is that a good estimate or?
I would be my ask. Yeah, I think that's, I would love to see this project move along, and I understand that the problem is moving along. However, I think we need to do a better job of communicating to the residents around the facility to make sure they understand, because when the campaign's real, this is what we heard right here, this is in the top.
There's a significant amount of residents, the proximity of that facility, that are really concerned about, and it's more like issues.
Absolutely, yeah.
I think that's a good point, and I just want the people that have a question, you know, to be honest with them, and just inform them that, you know, even though our attitude is right, and we'd love to see it, and we do everything we can, it's going to be a long-term thing, and so they'll be aware, you know, but that's my purpose, because I know all of you get questions about it.
Yeah, we do, and I think if we can put something out there that can help us and also to let them know that we're not, we're attempting to do something that I forgot about.
No, absolutely.
The potential, potential equation on the timeline, I was told, proper, with proper focus and certain steps being accomplished along the way, five to seven.
See, you can, you know?
May I ask about the, the parking lot across the street?
Sure.
I thought I understood, I read the report, that is a separate owner.
That's correct, yes.
So that still has some potential, is that right? Is that remediation as well?
Well, that, because that site had a development plan and an active developer on it, it went through a full Phase 1 and Phase 2, and it has a no further action on it, and that's the, those are the words you want to hear as a developer, and you're getting from NCDEQ, no further action, they're great words to hear. So that has a future, a development future. Will it be the same as Mr. Tam's development? Unfortunately, it will not. But the, in an interesting twist of irony, the former owner of the Western Electric Plant, when he sold it to the current private owner, used those funds to buy the parking lot site. So the former owner of the plant site now owns the parking lot site.
Well, this, that particular slide is actually significantly impacted by road construction of the night, Nolan?
Yeah, I mean, the intersection project's completely, there is a widening project program that's built that's on the radar for DOT, but that's Peter's fault, and I don't know how much it would impact that area, because it already been, because already is a widening of areas, so.
But there's no technology to get that to the last side?
On the parking lot, I think, not to my knowledge, but I downloaded the copies of the Phase 1 and Phase 2 and seen the words, no further action, so that makes me feel good that it's going to sign off on it.
That entire block beyond the parking lot site, that faces even faces Church Street, I think they have as less potential as any site that needs problems for development.
Well, we've had that conversation years ago, that whole block.
That whole block, you think about?
There was some, Mayor, you spoke, and Ranford said that many years ago, that trailer park that's behind this parking lot, didn't you speak on that, about buying that up?
There was someone interested about the whole piece, you can go all the way down, you've got visibility on Church Street, on the front side, that's an interesting parcel of property to all put together.
But the other thing that I hear, you want me to hear the same thing, is, you know, it looks like we've got a ton of issues, it looks like something's just not, it's not blending into the neighborhood very well. I mean, how big of an issue is that?
We're prepared to talk about that, so, Peter, can you yield his seat to Nolan?
Yes, actually, no, I'm just talking. I guess you're not, those issues. So staff over the last year, we've been meeting on a monthly basis, when I say staff, we've got police, fire inspections, both of them, legal, admin, Peter's in there, planning posts, really just trying to keep our eyes on the site in terms of what's going on. Some of the things we look at are site security and compliance, whether it's UDO or, you know, City Code. And so obviously, there were some, particularly earlier in the year, some issues with vandalism on the site, fakers were, you know, cutting into the fence, getting into the building, you know, and occupied some space temporarily, but there were creating issues, there were broken windows and doors and things of that nature. And so we were, as a staff, collectively working with the property owner, trying to get them to secure those fence locations, doors, things of that nature. We did have some success, I would say. It's challenging for the property owner, but as soon as he fixes one area of the fence, he may find himself trying to fix another area of the fence the next week. He did install a significant amount of against the longer hooded roof, which has helped a good bit with entry into the site. And so I think of all that, you know, as part of us, our staff continually trying to communicate the issues there, keeping him aware of it. There were some roof repairs that needed to be done, I think he's patched that, as best we can, we can tell, to the extent that it's not something that we would be picking up. So standard, you know, building, actual, one of the things we look at is compliance. We did have to issue one stop report, at one point they were doing some unpermitted demolition work, and so we got that worked out. And then, but we haven't had to issue any notice of violations on the site, mostly just been communicating, trying to get them to respond. They have shown interest in doing some cameras, some lighting, they haven't, haven't got that worked out today, so we should, from our meetings. We don't, you know, from a development permitting process, unless the feds and the states have approved a work plan from the property owner, we would not issue any development permits. And so the only work plan that we know of, we're aware of, is for buildings 13 and 14 and stores, so.
So I guess ultimately, that was my question, there is no long-term campus-wide plan?
From what we can tell, somebody knows something, I don't, come to this program, there doesn't seem to be a comprehensive plan. He is doing some demolition work that is permitted now in building 101A, which is allowed to be permitted to do the demolition, but he doesn't have a work plan for that area. He only have work plans approved for building 13 and 14, and a store.
Well, obviously, there's a lot of pieces.
Unoccupied stores, yeah.
Obviously, there's a lot of pieces to this, not too dissimilar from the conversation about homelessness, Tony suggested a roundtable, I'd like to be part of a roundtable, just to pop this, I mean, it's, this one I've heard for many years, but the concerns, I think, from the surrounding residents really became, elevated when the policy watch articles came out. And then I think the most recent one about, I think it was centered around air quality, is that right?
Is there?
So obviously, there's a, there's an aesthetic piece, there's a, there's a mobilization of the size and scope, there's a complexity of remediation, and then there's a health and safety wellness piece. So I just think we need to keep our hands on this to try to get to an end result that it's going to be difficult for that area to do anything positive if that piece is correct and approved, and that's going to be a real hit, believe it. I would be willing to facilitate the route if it would, if our council was starting working on this thing. I have reached out to Bud's office at first, we're going to meet to look at what, from a federal perspective, we can get a spotlight on it. There's some extensive knowledge with some of our county commissioners about the history of this project, of this property, and how does it convey to hand what guarantees were being, you know, will conveyed as well. We can certainly leverage that, but I think with the right group and council's permission, I'd like to try to stay on top of the same, and I would be willing to, to try to facilitate that.
But I want to commend the work that Peter and Nolan have done, because this was, this has been an issue since I was on the council in the 80s, so this is not a new thing to come up, and I think if they have drawn a spot level, I just want to commend what they've done so far. It's such an attractive problem, it's very difficult to fix, just not open up, something to fill.
All right, thank you, Nolan, we appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is ID is 169, 171, North Main Street, demolition coverage, but local leaders, I'm expecting, thank you for your advice.
What do you think?
Russell, I wonder if you would be prepared?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just need to get this thing on, so, there you go. Is that better?
Yes.
All right. So thank you all for allowing me to present tonight. So I'd like for us to discuss the two buildings, 169 and 171, North Main Street. Both buildings are in grave disrepair. I've reached out to the property owners of both structures, Mr. Thomas Kyle, Will's, and Mr. Dixon Barrymore, both made very clear that they had an desire to frame the buildings in the morning of the state building codes or the City Code ordinances. So we're going to have to ask you all to assist on this end, and to discuss, going to approve a president's request and a demolition warrant request, to allow us to know, to know what is going to happen.
Do we know of any historical value to this building?
In terms of, is it market value for the building?
Well, whether it, I mean, I don't know how old the building is, for instance, I think it does have some demonstration, it's not beautiful by any stretch, but.
Based on the tax figures we have here, we can see the buildings were built back in the 1920s.
So it's not?
Mind if I scan through the pictures?
Yes, I did, I did, yes, so I'll show you the pictures that we have here, at this location, to give you an idea of the condition of the property. So this is 171 here, which is a single-square building. What you'll notice in the photographs is that the roof has completely fallen into the structure, so at the top here, there's nothing left on. Building 171. Building one seventy-one, which is adjacent to that, this is the better picture of the roof that's attached inside the building. Building one sixty-nine, which is here, is a grease store building. The bottom story here is chock full of CRT televisions. At one point, this was a television repair shop. Uh, the old spring trophy shop was in the, uh, was in the adjacent building. Earlier this month, the fire department responded to a call. There was a unsheltered individual who was occupied in section four of one seventy-one. The one sixty-nine here apologized. And they attempted to start a fire inside a pot to keep themselves warm. And smoke developed rapidly, and so they tried to put it out, and they couldn't. So, um, so, so passersby saw there was smoke in the outbuilding, contacted the fire department, and responded to the call. Third floor, not exactly sure where it's up there. Best we can tell, it was used for storage of something. So, uh, again, both of these buildings are in grave disrepair. There is asbestos present in both buildings. We have had asbestos assessment before. And it does show that there is, uh, some equipment in both of these buildings that contain large amounts of asbestos, which we like to be elevated before the demolition can commence.
Can I add a little something to this? This has been ongoing for years now, and the city was doing inspection for it. Prior to Russell being there, had been trying to get the owners, the current two owners are cousins to one another. They have no interest in this property whatsoever. We've really been involved in over the last three years, three and a half to four years. We've been involved with two different estates. The parents' situation on each of this, each of these cousins, if the property's changed hands. So each time that happened, we were dealing with another set of circumstances, opening of the estate. And the reason that was happening, we weren't really doing it. We had an individual who was interested in buying the property. Y'all took a tour about a year and a half ago, and I know you rode by here and took a look at it. And at the time, we were the tail end of having, uh, some interest from an independent buyer. Maybe coming in and re-trying to do something with it. Didn't take them long. Once they finished doing all the title work and taking a look at the property, they finally backed out. We considered interest in it. Not that, because they knew they were gonna have to break it down too. Quite frankly, they're looking at it from the standpoint, they might be interested in buying it after the city had, you know, spent a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to get it down.
So is that what it's gonna cost, a hundred and twenty thousand?
Roughly, yes.
So what is our recourse?
You have a lien against the real property interests.
But, but that's just gonna set perpetuity. Nobody's gonna do anything about it. It's just gonna set.
If you foreclose on your lien, more than likely, you might have someone dying in, had a fraction of that, and you get it back on the, on. Or, or the city. You do understand that this is, these are things that staff is talking about, adoptions. Um, it's right adjacent to one of your parks.
Yeah, yeah, but I guess my point is, I, I would be fine with expedite the demolition because it's self-delation anyway. You know, sooner or later, we just gotta sweep it up. But, but then what's, what's next? I don't wanna just forget about it. Because that's a lot of money to spend cleaning up what somebody didn't have care of in their own responsibility.
Correct, but a- as, as the world turns, you know, you're, you're sitting there and you're gonna get a lien against that property. The question is, does it value add? Does the property on its earth, does it value? Of course it does.
It won't, it won't. But how many properties do you think the city of Brompton, we have liens on?
It's the same thing.
You can go back and take a look at the number of demolitions that you've had. And occasionally you will find, many of the times, the properties are in the condition they were in to be demolished. It's because they were air property.
I understand, but how many do we have? How many do we have liens on right now? They're just sitting. They've been sitting for years.
I would, I could not tell you.
I'd like to, uh.
I can share it since two thousand seven, that's when I was, again, working with the inspection. But I know since then, we've had, this would be the third commercial building that we have, you know, worked on in this type of area. We had a demolition, we had Broad Street. If you remember the, um, you know, the senior living community there, we inventoried, that was ninety thousand dollars to everything.
That, that will pay up.
So they're laying on that one. Then on West Web Avenue, they planted there, um, during our, there was a set of buildings there, past structures that we ended up tearing down.
Let me, let me give credit to the inspections department in, in, over the past years. They have worked pretty well in working with some owners who, we were facing this same sort of situation. For example, on Queen Anne Street. I had to give that man credit right there. He worked, he worked, uh, that owner to the point where they finally took that property, took it down themselves. It's something against, but if we had done it, we'd be back in the same situation because property just simply not value add. If you would put it back on the market. And I must say, this has been a dream world. About, gosh, fifteen years ago, Bob Harrier and I met with the developers for, at that point in time, rather new community of the RAL. Who, hence went to lock him out. And he's done an unbelievable job in developing additional property. And then we get walking down the street and beginning to heart rate on the phone, he could say this. And we were talking about this side of Main Street, and their comments were, no. We like that side of Main Street. And I asked him why. He said, because the buildings you got there now could either be torn down or renovated, and much more could be done in that block of a development standpoint. You know, that, that was the last conversation we, we ever had. But I recall vividly going into these trophy shop over, over the years. But honestly, the question was asked, what's the other two buildings we used for? I don't ever recall anything that, you know, in terms of, I don't think anybody was never visible from a soul point anyway, what those two buildings were using by the, do you recall?
No, the only thing I remember is the trophy, but.
Trophy, the other two buildings, I don't.
But I mean, getting back to the point, you're asking for us to go ahead and proceed with demolition.
Correct.
I'll make my own. So it's a safety issue at this point?
Yes. But, but then I would love to see us, see what we have, our, that we're attached to from a lien or, or any sort of control element. Because there's gotta be a way to get these properties back into, you know, to a developer's hands. And they're just tied up, and we're, we're enabling property a little bit, and it hurt out of attention.
So, and, and adjacent business owner, Mr. Graves has shown interest in the property. At one point, he was having a conversation.
It'll be a while, people, if you actually spend a hundred and twenty grand on it. Precise, that's.
Is that right?
But, but at some point, it, it.
Jenny's interested in it, after we spent.
My, my understanding is that, uh, before, the gentleman wondered, asked the way it looked, if he was with his son, he and Mr. Graves were having conversations about the property, and he didn't, he just didn't want us out.
And I understand, he was just a one-half undivided interest holder of his property. So you've had that going on the whole time, two, two different sides. And I, you know, sometimes, it, it's a family situation, so sometimes they don't see eye to eye. And sometimes people who have made livelihoods out of buildings for a long period of time, they seem to think they have more value to it than what they really do.
Absolutely.
We, we were running into that, and finally, the potential buyer simply just, like, before, I think he analyzed the situation and backed out. And had left it in our lap.
I, I would just like to see some, some ideas for what, what we could do with, with the influence we have on some of these properties.
Mayor, I think the way to start, to start that conversation and try to get a, get a feel for where we're at, let's, let's go back over the last years, many years, to see how many, where we've demolished residential buildings as well as being commercial buildings.
And the other thing is, we've, we've got tax, we're spending taxpayer dollars on this to help, you know, is there a method of recovering some?
Yes, and, and that is foreclosing on your lien that you have on it. But I'm simply going to say, you know, it's not going to value add. You're not gonna recover the dollars. But that's the exact, uh, handle, to wait the owner, the potential buyer, analyze the situation.
Sure, probably.
If you go back several years, you're getting the dog food factory, the old cattle dog food factory, that was a real challenge. Uh, you, the mayor, when you throw in bankruptcy and two SDA loans, because of Vic, it really gets involved. I know that from personal.
Oh, there you go.
The only hope is that you can get some private development and maybe other stuff.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing. We could facilitate that.
And then, you know, and whether as a, um, in some ways, I'm sure as people will look at it, in some ways, it's got the incentive. We could just advance, take, take the property down.
That's right.
It is.
Absolutely.
We, we've taken the property down. I'm not sure what the site will look like when it's demolished. I'm not sure if that ready, I'd rather go in and, if there's some particular gray level.
Yes, so part of the demolition estimate does include, um, bio-grading, heating, and strong.
Proceed. So I mean, that's, that's one thing we can, uh, yeah.
All right, well, you've got your great line. Okay, for consent, tomorrow.
Yeah.
All right, next item on the agenda is a council discussion on adopting a resolution of support. A UN treaty on prohibition of nuclear weapons just came up, uh, at the Paramount Theater the night of the, uh, squaring in. And then, uh, the captain's requested, came back from the last meeting and spoke in. And, uh, I think, uh, a couple of council members who said they'd like to visit this. So I'll maybe ask Patty or somebody for some input on this district, the council, council discussion.
Mr. Kyle Carter, they called me again and asked if anything was gonna happen, and I said, suggest it because we were so busy that night. It might be okay to come down and talk about it.
Yeah, that did not mean that, uh, negative, but.
Just wasn't promoting us all.
Yeah, interesting.
I, I just want to speak in favor of it, and it's, um, apparently, the plan is to spend about two trillion dollars renovating our weapons. And, um, that seems pretty ridiculous when we have, I can't remember exactly what the numbers are, but we have about fifty-six hundred, um, warheads to, that would annihilate, one or two of them would annihilate, just spell everything. Russia has about an equal amount of other countries have much fewer. And all this is asking is to say that we, we want to support the UN treaty, treaty on prohibiting nuclear weapons at all. And it's, um, trying for a group of people in Berlin, certainly sizable number of people who are part of the peace coalition. So I'm, I'm hoping to hear it.
I, I'd like to speak in favor too, you know, going back, you know, some years ago, back during fifty, you know, right? Beginning of the Cold War and, uh, the projects in Cuba and everything. It really, uh, anything, my, my practical question, anything we can do to reduce the proliferation of nuclear weapons, I'd like to join in. I don't know how effective this will be, but, uh, you, you, I'd like to do what, whatever we can to say, uh, let's, let's work toward that. I think it's a worthwhile goal. And you can always live with a hope like right there. Of course, you talked about other things, that nuclear weapons and sort of the power category is all for it. You, you just don't have, but anyway, I, I'm, I'm in favor of it, and I ask, you know, all of you to consider favorably. And, and I'd actively put on the, the center agenda unless it's been a problem, Captain.
Only concern I have is, you know, there's a certain level, I guess there's a certain level, in my mind, there's a role clarity for what the scope and purpose of municipal elected officials are, what we do by charter and that sort of thing. And I'm, I'm all for peace and prosperity and, and, uh, everything else from that matter. But my fear is that when you start venturing out on something that could be, at least viewed by some others as ideological in nature, then what's this, the next group or the next thing that comes up? And does it keep going? I mean, there's a group that called me, uh, last week about, would you support, would council support something about our southern borders? Yeah, really good argument. Really good information. I mean, at what point in time do we stick to our role? Or do we start venturing out on these things? And how would we determine that? That's, that would be a concern I would have. But I'm not, I'm not being really opposed to anything. I'm just concerned about venturing in those patterns. Can you have thoughts on that?
Just gonna follow, I, 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 man, I, I had plenty of other things coming, coming up over the course of my career. And I know exactly what you're talking about, is that, you know, people come along with legitimate causes and, you know, and make a good argument for it. You know, is it, is it, is it so far beyond our scope here from a policy perspective, do we even touch it? You know what I mean? You know, would it be effective or not be effective? I don't know. I, the only, the only thing I can come up with, quite frankly, is we just sort of have to, day deep one, as they come through, will not weigh in on it. And, and this one, uh, I, I, I feel like we could weigh in on it, you know, some of the others when they come up. I'm, I'm suggesting, Mayor, is that, you know, while this might be supported, if we have an oven come through, I don't know that I'd be so inclined to do it. I'm, I'm just saying, that would be my thing, you know, we just have to sort of assess each one as they come along. So it, it'd be hard to develop a policy to say, you know, one fit in a category that we can look at and support or not even consider. But I, but I understand, I understand exactly what you're saying. Let me stop at that. I know that I might wanna have something to add to.
Is it basically a thing that we could delay and have more discussion about this topic as opposed to putting our opinions in? Better than that, coming up in March. I found that. If there was more to it, but.
I, I have no problem with that. I'm, I'm gonna ask a very stupid question, but it would be. If, if two pages of the city were listed, and it's either the city's name or the state's, there are numbers, is that a, uh, help me out? Nolan, you're engineering. Help me out on what you think those numbers say. Go to page. Yeah, it's not good. Behind the American Peace Action, you see two pages of cities that adopted such resolutions, okay? There are one, two, three, four, five, six in North Carolina.
Harold, I, I, my guess is that's the year.
The year today?
And the month. So if you look at, so the bottom right, York, PA, my guess is with the data, uh, probably oh nine, maybe they adopted it in July two thousand nine.
Okay.
If that follows, doesn't, because I don't see it, I don't see it as a population, it doesn't need a population. My guess is that maybe the year.
And then you go, then we'll look at Forsen, New Hampshire is fifteen, nine.
September of two thousand, Forsen, let's say.
New Hampshire. And then Bullard, it's eighty-eight.
So they adopted it in nineteen eighty-eight?
Yeah.
We'll, uh, we can dig that up more. Paige, Paige Shepherd, Foundation Sports, uh, mayor requested how many in the US? So we have that. Well, we'll dig that up tomorrow, so we can talk. As you carry on, I'll, I'll pull that website while we continue to about, about determining our.
I, I've got, you know, my, my, my point on this is, nobody's, nobody was in favor of, uh, you know, nuclear weapons. But I, I'm a little bit, you know, showing the age of a little hesitant now of how, when we start doing resolutions such as this is, then, how do we deal with, which one we deal with individually, I'm saying that. But we. But we put ourselves in a position that, um, maybe we just have it in the past, and I say we should, we want to do it now, but we certainly, I don't recall doing anything like this in the past. You know, I'm not saying that's the right one, or to look at it this.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's the best concern, you know, Bob said, because realistically, I, I don't know anything about nuclear weapons. I don't know what role responsible players have or not, kind of like, don't want nuclear war, don't want to experience it, but there's a level of, there's a level of government that's more capable of dealing with these things, I think. And, and I'm, I'm really, and I don't like being put in a position to really have to look at things like this. I really stay focused on what we do, because there might be something that comes up too much now, that I'd really like to look at that, and maybe everybody doesn't feel quite the same, and I just don't like to be put in those positions where I let a colleague, if I've got a question, I don't want to let those of you now that support it. I'm just concerned about the perpetuation of more weapons and where that goes, but. Council members all suggested that we might delay it a little bit. Harold, is that your?
I'm going to go with that.
Yeah. Is that good for you guys?
What?
Sorry, should I delay this to maybe, did you say March, Ron?
March should be fine, yeah. I'm trying to, I'm trying to look at this and see how many North Carolina towns, cities, villages, whatever. I see one, two, three, four, is that correct?
Yeah, Carboro and Durham in the first column.
And Waynesville and Lewisburg.
You got Chapel Hill and Creedmore in the third column.
Yeah.
Uh, you got Lewisburg over on the second page, and Waynesville, yeah, on the third page. Yeah, Lewisburg's sixth, it has to be.
I don't see any major. Does that take my position?
I'm trying to figure out what's, what's going to change, what would make the difference between now and March.
For me?
Yeah.
A little research, what does this represent? Why are no more towns and villages or cities not on this list? Why? I'm not saying it's bad or good, I just like doing a little research.
Well, I just wanted to know what, I think it may have to do with the fact that groups of people get together in those cities.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
That groups of people get together in those cities and bring this forward.
Nobody's asked in words.
Sorry?
Nobody's asked in Charlotte or Raleigh. Well, well.
Is the question?
I would just get the league to do it, then we'd be done, every city would be done.
Mr. Mayor, is, is the question whether or not this is an appropriate matter for the city council? Has a body to take a position on it? Is that the question?
I have a fundamental issue with it, whether it's appropriate or not. Sometimes we do things not appropriate, but, I mean, it's just out of our realm of, but, I mean, is it?
I, I mean, you, I think one of you alluded to the fact that it's one level of government, it's almost a, we're relying on your venture into like foreign policy issues, that are national, national security issues. You know, I'm not saying that the council can't take a position on these things, but as a practical matter, you know, we're, we're a, we do those things in this state, the state legislature says we can do. I don't know that we've ever, they've never said anything about us weighing in at the city on issues like this. It's kind of a sense of, sense of the community would be something, I guess you could argue, that we could venture into it thinking that way. Of course, there's nothing to prevent individual council members from writing a letter of support, as long as you indicate that it's you as an individual taking that position. But, uh, I'd be glad to look and see, I'd try to follow from the question as to why the league hasn't taken a position on this, why only six towns have, have addressed it. I'd call their city attorneys and ask if these issues came up there or these questions, you know?
I'd like to check by help, Ron, yeah?
Yeah. But David, if you would find out, you know, if it, if it was, you know, of course, we're in a Dillon Brook State, if anything, anything that would pivot to, you know, just look at that angle too, if you would. If it's beyond, if it's beyond our scope of the card, so, I, I think, I'd like to know that too.
Okay, we'll put it back on, um, March, pardon? Is there?
I'm, uh, the, the, I'm pretty, what I've already called, I, I, it doesn't say specifically, but my, my, I think the O dash O six is, it was two thousand six in the fourth line. Is it international? Is it an agency? So I think maybe there's an international way of writing the date, but we're not using C. That's my, that's my best guess. We'll, uh, include this link for you as well, it's majorsforpeace.org.
So the elements of peace action group is a nonprofit group, if I'm understanding correctly. And if you look at the signatures on, from that group, a majority of those individuals are directly related to some form of a church or, well, or, or non-profit. Those are more church related.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll have your research, David, Ronnie, do yours.
And if there's any other resolution like this that we've ever done in the past.
And I would suggest, what Mayor said, you know, to get a couple of, uh, those, uh, from the league and ask her.
About fifteen years ago, the council approved the treaty, um, in favor of, uh, Buy America or, um, keeping, uh, American companies in the US. Some textile executives requested the resolution and the council approved it. All right, any other special on this, we'll bring it back to court. Okay, the next item is, uh, item J, the cemetery annexation, we recognize, uh, engineering director, Todd Lattner.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Hopefully this will be your shortest agenda item tonight.
Perfect.
So, North Lawn Cemetery, I'm sure everybody's familiar with, um, right now, the cemetery itself is on two different tax parcels. Um, the parcel to the south is actually in the city limits. Uh, the parcel to the north is into EGJ, uh, the furthest parcel to the north, which the city also owns, is also into EGJ. Um, we just felt this was a good time to bring this forth, where the council would consider annexation of both of those properties to the north. Um, we're asking to adopt the intent resolution on tomorrow night's content agenda, set the public hearing for the fifteenth meeting in February. That will also coincide with a rezoning request that council, that staff will have, that will be also on that fifteenth night's agenda. Planning, we'll explain that a little bit later tonight, and I would be happy to address any questions you have either now or then. Uh, just makes sense logically from a planning perspective and a city perspective to annex this, since it's being contiguous and it's, it's split right now even between the use of the property.
Any questions or any, uh, issues would add that to the agenda for tomorrow? Thank you.
You told the truth.
Uh, IMH Land and Water Fund grant, um, we recognize Recreation Park Director Tony Lawes and Water Resources Director Bob Mares.
I think they are making their way from upstairs. I want to go ahead and, I want to see somebody at the door right there.
You want to think they want to make it to that shortage?
You want to go ahead and, uh, go with the last bit?
That's fine.
I might go and call the head and hear what they say. Settle off. My, my juice is on there.
Did I go with the bits?
I was thinking that, Bob.
I was sharing my experience.
Another great visitor.
Um, Mayor Council, we're here to ask you to, uh, approve our submission to the NC Land and Water Grant Fund for some, uh, funds to possibly acquire the property, on Lake McIntosh, which gives to the owners, that we have previously discussed this September of last year under another grant application. We're still waiting to hear the results from that, that grant, that this is a state funding opportunity that, um, we could apply to contribute towards that purpose. We have requested two hundred and five thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, which the city would be required to match up to that amount.
So this would, in any way, they gave the application right in there? No, we can, we can combine funds and put towards the ultimate purpose of, we were proceeding with this.
Mayor, first, and Nolan, you might know this, is the Clean Water Trust Fund, is what it used to be called?
Right.
Thank you.
Very competitive, still may be, quite competitive over the years.
It's a perfect, our product is a perfect, uh, example of what that money's for.
It is.
Is everybody good with, with showing that?
Good. All right, we'll, uh, so the council's wishes will put that on the contention tomorrow, and then, as soon as you take a lot of good action, we will submit that grant before midnight tomorrow, so you can, tomorrow's a day.
Okay, let's get that on the sent.
No, we don't do that at all.
It's nine.
Their deadline is actually midnight tonight.
So we don't have to have the funds, um, one hundred percent committed before the application is in, but I need to put on there that it came to council, and we have the intent to match fifty percent, but it's due tonight at eleven fifty-nine, so, once I hear it's okay, just submit it, I'll submit it.
So we're good there?
All right, thank you.
All right, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Maybe we should say.
Because there's some good competition going down, we're going to, we're going to see if Conrad.
Yeah, I, I Conrad that.
Yeah, we'll give the Conrad a shake there. All right, my boards and commissions report to the back three, we're going to planning and zoning, so we recognize, uh, planning manager, Conrad, I'll be there.
You can be mayor, members of council. Planning and zoning commission has three items, they've all recommended approval. First item is a zoning change to, uh, from land industrial, HDR and MDR to be high-density residential. Your second property, it is on the corner of twenty-eighth, Thirteenth, Elements Row, Bonnie Lane, and Elements, current zone district is medium-density residential. The request is to change this to general business. And your third request, these, an expansion of the North Lawn Cemetery, to change the zoning from MDR, medium-density residential, to conditional residential to allow cemetery use. Public comments were received on all items, staff has responded accordingly, and the planning and zoning commission has recommended approval for all three items. You know what answer to the question you want to have?
Fourth item, the, uh, notification, yes.
That, that's going to be brought to council at a later date.
Any, any questions about this? So we'll be, this will be on the agenda, set that public hearing.
Yeah, so staff is requesting the public hearing to be, uh, February fifteenth for all, all three items.
Is that good?
Good.
All right. Conrad, thank you for that.
Yeah, good, yeah, good.
So, uh, my item on the agenda is item J, city major's report.
Don't make any shit.
Why don't you speak up earlier?
He said, he said it's due to the last year.
I'll, I'll be interacting, comment as we move along. Thank you.
All right, nobody has anything else, so we will be here.
Oh, no, he, obviously. He's been channeled out there.
Other than that, keep all the good ones.